Good evening and welcome to the Council and Committee of the Whole meeting for March 7. Bienvenue au Réunion du Conseil Committee Plenier pour les sept mois. We'll open with a land acknowledgement which will ask from Councilor Gagnier.
Merci, bonsoir tout le monde. Alors, de fait, dans le sens des territoires, je souhaite prendre un moment pour souligner l'importance des territoires sur lesquels nous sommes assemblés. La municipalité du Népesting West reconnaît avec l'esprit que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples Anishnabi, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations Népesting, Tamangomie et Dohkis, désignés par le traiton Robinson-Uron. Nous honorons leur lien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au façonnement et au renforcement de nos communautés. Cela faisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture. Merci.
Merci. I'll take any declarations of community area interest. Say none. Madame Quirk, who's it?
It is moved by Councilor Rivera and seconded by Councilor. Oh, Nicole, I'm so sorry. Be resolved that the agenda for the meeting of council held on March the 7th, 2023 be approved as presented.
Questions, comments, all in favor?
Now can you see, bro?
Sorry, excuse us. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the delegations and petitions. We are going to be receiving a presentation on the organizational review that was done by KPMG for the municipality. That, however, will start at 8:15, so we're going to proceed through the agenda. As we go, we'll break as we do at 8 o'clock, and when we return from break, we will welcome Mr. Pallone to give his presentation. The second item on the agenda for tonight is a petition that's included in your packages from a business owner at Popri Bates on Nipissing Street. It's a petition for accessible parking space in front of his business. Just like to note that the petition has been received and it will be coming back for discussion at our next council meeting in committee of the whole under Public Works. And with that, we'll move into committee of the whole. We have three items under general government. The first item up for discussion is the procedural bylaw update review. As you'll recall, quite a few meetings ago, we formed an ad hoc committee made up of myself, Councilor Restool, Councilor Gagnier, and Councilor Tessier, who worked alongside Mr. Barbeau and Ms. Ducharme to review the procedural bylaw. We had three meetings, I believe, and had some communications back and forth by email, and we did go through line by line. Madame Ducharme has prepared a fairly comprehensive staff report on the process and the changes that were made. And just to go over those briefly, I will pass it to Mr. Barbeau.
Thanks. Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I think in the memo, our clerk, who, by the way, even with the, you know, with the ad hoc group at all, she did a lot of work on this. And so, thanks very much, Mr. Char. One of the preambles is we've been working with our existing procedural bylaw with a few amendments here and there to update some legislation, not all, and to update some issues that arise from time to time. However, we haven't had a comprehensive review of our procedural bylaw. And so, this was an opportunity to start from scratch with council and look at it and provide some necessary changes. So, some of the changes that are in the memo, at least, is the introduction of a consent agenda. So, consent agenda basically is just the obvious reading of resolutions that are not really material or up for discussion. A whole heck of a lot would be forming part of a consent agenda, a list of the few that may be others as well. And so, that would shorten and allow more time for discussion and debate on issues that actually matter to council. There has been some concern with consent agendas with past councils with respect to not wanting to sweep anything under the rug from a public perspective. And there is an appendix to the document that indicates what you would do. So, you still have the same process as a mayor and council to review your minutes, clarify anything that you may find inaccurate or other aspects, or pull any item out. So, if there was something that was in the consent agenda that you wanted to pull out of the consent agenda, there's a process for doing that, and so you could be heard. The next issue was calling special meetings. So, the language was updated to ensure that calling special meetings that the head of council or delegate would consult with myself, CAO, not the person, the physician, and to ensure that everybody's available, which seems fairly simple. But we find it needs to be articulated so that we can not just call a meeting knowing people may not be available or ensuring that you get the maximum amount or at least quorum is present. The bylaw would provide the nature of the business to be addressed and the rationale for calling such a meeting, and the meeting will be clearly stated in the notice. I think that's already there. In addition, a special meeting is called, which will be closed to the public, and the general nature of such meeting shall be contained in the notice. The section shall provide clear direction on the method by which members of council may petition for a special meeting in the event that the chair is unable or unwilling to do so. That's already there as well, I believe. And finally, the language should include the calling of a special meeting by the chair or head of council where it's known that quorum can't be achieved. So, if there's proper consultation, what we don't want to have repeat was the instance where knowingly we come to this chamber and wait, knowing that you'll never achieve quorum. So, there is language that would preclude you from doing that. I think it's obviously my opinion, but obviously the opinion of all, is that we staff are paid to give their time. The counselors are paid much less to give their time and share, but they give a lot of their time in a lot of areas. It's important that they don't waste their time needlessly. There is an expansion of points of order that clearly articulate what a point of order is, what it is not, and such points of order would be raised, i.e., and how they're resolved. So, that's in the bylaw. Voting and decisions. The section should clearly indicate that the tie vote constitutes a negative vote result and that abstaining from voting is deemed to be a negative vote. Also, the section shall state that once the matter's been decided by a majority of members, that the decision shall be supported by all members regardless of the member's original vote on the matter. I think that's already in the duties, but that was discussed by the group. Delegations. Clearly define the types of delegations that will be entertained and which types shall not in order to ensure the important community initiatives are dealt with and also to ensure that it's appropriate. There could be some delegations in terms of party affiliation, circumstances, that in certain promotions, certain bigger issues that are already subject to negotiations. Those issues should form part of a delegation to council. Council, head of council, staff decorum, include language to expressly prohibit criticism, personal remarks, and questions of integrity. The form time limit. This was if you don't know if quorum is available. And so, we meet in this chamber and we announce for some urgency reason, some cannot attend, but we're not aware of it. Instead of waiting the half hour, we'll wait 15 minutes. Electronic participation, as we've discussed in this chamber, as council is discussed. While it's the hope that all members meet in person as much as possible, the reality is that since COVID, most organizations have become more fluid in allowing electronic participation. And current language in the bylaw will speak to electronic participation when it isn't safe to meet in person or with express permission of the chair for a variety of reasons. Recording of closed meetings. Remove the provision to destroy recordings after one year. We will keep the recordings as part of our records retention bylaw. The selection of committee chairs. Council may wish to amend this section to reflect that the final decision on appointment shall be made by council as a whole. Debate. To limit the length and number of times a member may speak on a matter to facilitate all members to have an opportunity to speak and ensure that debate not turn into a protracted argument. For example, in committee meetings, a member may speak twice on the matter. However, in council meetings, members may only speak once, or once, but a second time to request clarification on a point and comment made by another. Such section shall also address whether the chair shall leave his or her seat should he or she wish to participate in debate or to make a motion. And in the event that the chair chooses to leave, the chair, he or she shall designate the deputy mayor or other member in the deputy's absence. What we're trying to do here and what the committee discussed and agreed upon is that if it's very clear that certain individuals have a specific point and other individuals have another point and there's no consensus or change, unless there's additional information, black, white, black, white, black, white, how long are you going to say that when you know what the instance is? Take it to a vote or take it to a consensus and move on. If all the information is put, has been tabled, and all it is then is it becomes an argument and it really doesn't become a debate because there's no new information. Closed session. The session will be shortened to reflect that closed meetings may be held according to section 239 of the act. The text of the legislation may not be repeated. The section indicated that the auditor's report be heard and closed meetings be removed as it is, as it is in current practice, and that additional language be included to define the roles and responsibilities of members of council relating to information and documentation contained in a closed session, which would align with the code of conduct. Breaches. To require the chair to put to a vote the question of expelling a member of council for breach or infraction of the rules and also permit the offending member to remain in his or her seat if an apology is not immediately forthcoming. So, what we want to have confirmed on that is that basically if there is some dispute on that, that it would become a vote of council. And a new one is a motion to postpone indefinitely would allow a means by which council may refuse to deal with a motion which is frivolous or vexatious or which may prove embarrassing to a member or council as a whole. The motion to postpone indefinitely must occur before debate on the main motion begins. There are a variety of other issues or points in the bylaw. Madam Mayor, if you want me to raise others or do you have a question at this point?
Can I just say a couple of things on the report to start with? I want to say that a lot of our discussion as an ad hoc committee was focused on really putting a lot of the control back into council as a whole. So, when we look at things like the ability for the mayor to eject somebody, you know, we really wanted to put that back to a place where it is council's decision that there is not kind of an unequal distribution of power. Because I think, you know, the importance of the mayor being but one voice of nine is a really important point, and I think it needed to be focused on in the procedural bylaw. And there were some other places where we kind of touched on, you know, how to make sure that it was a document that really supported the equal rule of each member of council. And, I mean, it's a very long document. Madame Ducharme did a great job of finding, I think, a bylaw that is more articulate than the previous one. And if there are other items throughout the bylaw that you want me to address, I'll pass it back to you. I'm sorry, I just wanted to know.
So, it's nice to hear. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go over some of the highlighted in my section here. Section 3.6 is a change. Well, I have the highlighted changes of your lengthy document. The mayor will, in consultation with members of council, select the committee chairs for the committee of the whole and the deputy mayor. The members will support the final decision of the mayor. Signs a little autocratic, but it is necessary as the head of council, who was elected by all of the constituents, to have that kind of authority presiding over council. There has been instances in the not-so-recent past, I could say a few councils ago, where it became a potential issue of concern where the council would not support the mayor's selections in certain instances. That, you know, is almost a confidence vote and starts a term in a really bad way. So, you know, in this way, you know, as long as the proper consultation is held and it's done in a aggressive manner, I think that's probably something that should be upheld. Meeting locations. It is our intention, even in this term, in our strat planning sessions and other discussions we've had, about reintroducing, taking certain meetings to various locations as a method of communication and connection to the various communities. So, it would be our intention to, we didn't want to put it in legislative, but it would be our intention to have a meeting, an external meeting in spring and one in the fall. Electronic participations. Members shall, as I indicated, shall endeavor at all times to meet in person insofar as practical. When a member or members wish to meet electronically for a reason other than provided, such member shall, in advance of the time fixed at the meeting, request permission from the chair to participate electronically, which permission shall not be unreasonably withheld. Roles of council. No individual council member may direct staff to perform such duties that have not been authorized by resolution of council. Role of the head of council is to act as council's representative when dealing with other level. I'm only reading the parts that are changed. With other levels of government, their agencies, and the private sector and the media on matters relating to council-supported decisions. So, the mayor is the chief spokesperson when dealing with outside areas. The 6.1 here. Hope I'm not putting you to sleep. Council duties. All members of council shall represent and support council declaring its will and implicitly obeying its decision in all things. The other one is members of council shall clearly qualify any statement which deals with matters which have not been approved or adopted by council, either by resolution or by law, as being their own personal opinion and not that of council as a whole when addressing other levels of government, the private sector, or the media. The mayor or committee chair. The mayor or committee chair shall represent, support council declaring its will and obeying decisions. The mayor or committee chair shall clearly qualify any statements which deals with matters which have not been approved or adopted by council, either by resolution or by law, as being their own personal. So, the same language as before. The agenda items for council and committee of the whole shall be brought to the mayor and/or CAO or designate. Agenda items for which staff research, and this is kind of a change as to how we operate, which is going to involve some adjustment by staff as well. I think it's in the best interest of quality reports. Anyway, so the agenda item for which staff research, supporting items or report is required shall be submitted a minimum 14 days in advance of the date on which the agenda will be distributed. Right now, the, you know, it's really just a week's preparation of a report now. So, we don't feel that's long enough. Agenda items which do not require staff input, supporting items or reports shall be submitted a minimum of seven days in advance of the date on which the agenda will be distributed. This doesn't affect staff other than the clerk's department. And what I see, and I think I've spoken to you, and I think you probably received emails at very late on Fridays. Well, we want to get away from that. We want to make, you know, because we find we're chasing things on Friday before. We'd like to prepare these agendas ahead of time and give you more time for contemplation. Notwithstanding 10.2.2, in the interest of ensuring that proper consideration is provided to all items, certain items may be moved to subsequent agendas to ensure that they are dealt with appropriately. In such cases, the requester shall be advised in advance of the date on which the item will appear. The request for items, and to explain that, and this has been a point of contention a little bit, but it isn't to be contentious or to be malicious. It's, I think, some of us have inherent knowledge as to how long things take. And after a while, once the agenda's full, we just know that it won't happen anyway. So, you know, we have to prioritize what needs to be on the agenda and then manage the time. Notwithstanding, so that's, that one. Request for items to be included on the agenda shall be on the required form attached as Schedule A. The agenda item request form accompanied by any supporting documents, such as items may be provided to the CAO or directly to the mayor, and for them, for myself. Notwithstanding paragraph 10.3 below, it is understood that any unfinished agenda item shall be dealt with. The CAO and the mayor shall meet to discuss the upcoming agendas, which we're doing regular. I can also say that I spoke with communications and pending the approval of this, there's also an electronic request that will be on the, that will be an internal ability for council to go on electronically and make agenda requests electronically as opposed to the old-fashioned way. So, that's coming up shortly, and they'll have this kind of information with it too so that you know what the deadlines are. Modifications to agendas. Any unfinished items from prior meetings. In the event that the committee of the whole, the regular meeting items were not dealt with at the preceding meeting due to curfew having been reached, those items shall be dealt with immediately following the delegation before any other items on the current agenda. So, if we weren't able to finish last meeting, the second meeting in February, and I forget when it was, and we get to this meeting, the first thing we would do is not this. We would finish off the last meeting. That was up in the air. There was a lot of carryover, and I think this would clarify for everyone. Regular meetings. I spoke to a consent agenda. The delivery of the agenda. The clerk or his delegate shall, insofar as practical, prepare and make available to members of council the agenda by 4:30 p.m. on the Thursday preceding a regular scheduled council meeting. The agenda package shall be distributed by email with a link to the municipality's website to all members of council and heads of department. But this will give you an additional date and to query, you know, staff and ask any questions as opposed to just the Monday and/or the Tuesday of the meeting. The preparation of the regular agenda for regular meetings. The agenda shall be prepared by the clerk and the subjects approved by the CAO or designate in consultation with the mayor. As I indicated to the mayor and to you, really, my issue is not to be an approval person. My issue is really to ensure that staff can probably deal with your request. And I, you know, so you can't just assume that we're going to, we can drop everything and meet your needs effectively, and that's why there has to be some coordination at the staff level. Indefinitely. A motion to postpone indefinitely may be introduced when an embarrassing, frivolous, commutation main motion has been brought before the members, and the members do not want to deal with it. At this point, any member can propose to dispose of the question without bringing a direct vote to the matter. A motion to postpone indefinitely may be introduced immediately before the main motion has been made and before debate has begun, after which it is too late to bring this motion forward. So, if it's been tabled, it's too late. That doesn't take away, if people have a feeling that concerns wouldn't be met and they don't feel as frivolous or vexatious, for them, anybody puts a motion forward probably doesn't. There's still a vote, so it's still a discussion, or it's still a decision by this body corporate to decide whether they agree with you or not. And if they agree with you, then it keeps, you know, it's defeated, and then we keep, we deal with it. Notice of motion must be presented to the appropriate motion format on the notice of motion form attached here to Schedule C. So, there'll be a notice of motion format and may be delivered to the clerk no later than 12:00 p.m. noon, seven days, one week in advance of the date on which the agenda is prepared in order to be included to the final agenda in order to be introduced, or be read during the notice of motion segment of the agenda on a regularly scheduled meeting of council. So, if you introduce a notice of motion on time, it appears tonight. Let's say it was seven days ago. If it isn't, and you're introducing it at the meeting, then it will appear on the next meeting. Notice of motion, which notice given prior to the deadline set out shall be, so just said that. Withdrawal of the motion. Before the chair states the motion, it belongs to the mover, and he or she may ask to withdraw or modify without permission. The chair shall either repeat the motion in its modified version or state that the motion has been withdrawn, so that you own the motion that you're bringing forward until it's tabled. So, prior to, if you say, you know what, I've received information, it doesn't work, or I didn't quite word it right, I'd like to have this amended, that's your motion to be tabled. After your motion is received by the chair, shall be deemed to be in possession of the council. That's basically what I've been indicating. And then after, at that point, when it's read and tabled, then it's the property of the council. If any member objects to the withdrawal of the motion, a motion to maintain the question may be entertained and become a main motion. If no member objects to the withdrawal of the motion, the motion shall be considered withdrawn without necessity of a second or a vote. Prior to the chair stating the motion, another member may ask the chair if the mover or the motion will accept the change to the motion. The mover may either accept or reject the proposed change. If the mover rejects the proposed change, the member suggesting the change may propose an amendment after the motion has been read, you know, which is part of our, I don't know if this is confusing to you, but we have motions to amend already. Second, draws. If the person who seconds the motion withdraws a second from the modified form, the chair may ask for another second. Recording the withdrawal, a withdrawn, a withdrawn motion need to, need not be recorded in the minutes unless the motion has been carried over as unfinished business from the previous meeting. Council are the highlighted changes. I want to thank, on behalf of staff, Councilor Tessier and Councilor Restool and the mayor and Councilor Gagnier. Or was it you? No.
I got him. I look alike.
I don't know. I don't know about my sense of you, but no, he's not that forgettable yet. Anyway, so I leave it to you, Madam Mayor, if there are any questions.
So, you know, this is a document that is ours. It's the document that governs the way we function over the next four years. And so, it's a pretty important basis, but it is also, it's not written in stone once we do this. If we come down the line six months and we go, you know what, we should have added this and we should have added that, we can always bring it back for additional changes. I know it is a long document, but I would like to open up the floor. You can see both from the staff report and from Mr. Barbeau that there's been a lot of work done on it, but if you have questions about sections or parts of it, either you don't understand or you don't agree with how it's been written or you'd like to see some changes, this is the time for us to do that. So, with that, I will open the floor. I don't, should I do it generally or should I deal with like the stuff like the consent agendas and stuff?
It could go a lot quicker, Mayor. If there aren't any comments or concerns, then we would be able to shorten it. So, if the council has reviewed the document, if any comments on anything contain, I think that might be a general statement. I think that might be a general statement.
Okay, so Counselor Tassier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is an item that I want to add to the agenda, it's for reports.
Okay.
There is a bylaw that was established in 2019 in June to ensure that reports such as dispersment reports are included. And I can just read you a little bit from that bylaw. It's a bylaw to adopt an accountability and transparency policy for the corporation of the municipality of West Nekasing. Its purpose and application following the municipal act requires that all municipalities adopt and maintain a policy with respect to the manner in which a municipality will try to ensure that it is accountable to the public for its actions and the manner in which the municipality will try to ensure that its actions are transparent to the public. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance for the delivery of the municipality activities and services in accordance with the principles as outlined herein. This policy has been developed in accordance with the act to comply with Section 270. It defines accountability, the principle that the municipality will be responsible to its stakeholders for decisions made and policies implemented, as well as its actions and or inactions. And transparency, the principle that the municipality actively encourages and fosters stakeholder participation and openness in its decision-making processes. Additionally, transparency means that the municipality's decision-making process is open and clear to the public. So having reports, and there's example of reports, and it's not limited to any specific reports. This will also help us as council, because when come times to evaluating our CAO, we don't have anything to support how to evaluate as well. So by having reports, then we can review and that will help us with making sure that the services that are provided are adequate to the stakeholders.
Okay, so you would like a section added for reports?
Yeah, so in the, I don't know if it's on the regular meetings, to have reports, and then we'll have to define what type of reports we need. Like service requests would be a good report to have, to see how many server requests we receive, for which departments, how the, if they're answered, or if they're still outstanding, for what reasons.
Can you get to, tell me which se, so this is under the makeup of the agenda?
The agenda.
Sorry, do you have a number there?
Section 10.
Thank you.
It's either like modification to modifications to agenda, and then you got your roll call opening. So wherever would fit probably, probably under regular meetings, if it's just normal.
And do you, would you want it specified how often those reports are to come to council?
You may have to, depending on the types of report, because they'll come to council every meeting. So, because it's like a monthly report about, let's say, the operating expenses or the service request and maybe some more reports. So they could be split up, the first, the first meeting in the month to be a certain amount of reports, and then the next meeting be the rest of the reports. Because I'm sure there'll be quite a few reports, depending on, because you want a picture of all the departments.
Okay. Does any, anybody have some comments on, on that suggestion?
Well, I certainly, I think conceptually, an area where staff reports are provided outside of specific topic matters is probably a good idea. The depth of pin the details with respect to what our ability to provide reports are, how often, what types of reports. So my recommendation to you would be the same recommendation I made. Well, this is a little different, but I would, if I, if I were to advise you, Counselor Tassier, I would recommend that you put a agenda request form talking about the inclusion of reports and that we can put a staff report and have a little bit more detail and comment on the staff implications of the ability to provide reports that council wishes. So I think it's a separate project, and I think it, I think as the mayor indicated, I think my advice would be to provide and go and to consolidate what you agree with. And then what you want to add, I think it's, I'd like to debate that. I'd like council to debate and discuss the specifics of what, of what is being provided. And then we can provide you an update with what reports we already provide, and then other reports that are requested could be handled. So if you have that, I would probably include that in a general government meeting and then amend this, which wouldn't be that difficult to do and just add the section at that time.
Can, can we do that through like the ad hoc, through our group as far as reports and consultation with you and going through the different, because there are examples of reports here. So that you're aware what the reports are, and then we could say what additional reports.
My, my concern with the ad hoc, ad hoc, that sounds like efficient. The ad hoc, a portion of it would be the inclusion of all at that point, because I think some of what you're discussing, as an example, the first report that you mentioned, there was a discussion in your ad hoc committee about not seeing the need for it. And I don't want to sway the rest of council, but I think those types of council, those types of discussions about that would probably lead to a vote. Or if I feel that there's something that may not be fully supported, then I, and I think there's some of them that you're requesting may not be. So I think it's better in this chamber if you do it at that point. So it's my opinion.
So requested.
Unless you have a, you know, and then you have a majority council, then it is a majority. So if you get consensus there, but my, my view is that I think that if you want to add reports and you are clear in your gender request form as to what reports, we can provide a report on what reports exist and what we're able to do, we're not able to, and why. And then council can deliberate whether, well, that's fine, we don't agree, I think we want this, so we'll figure it out, or whatever. I think you need to know the information why. And I'll just state the one without debating it. Our technology does not allow for that report anymore, we indicated that to you. So it just doesn't exist anymore. We'd have to formulate a report in order to do that, or Adam software no longer lets us do that. And so that's why it doesn't, isn't appearing, it's just unable to do that. We can give you check requisition. Then it gets into issues of privacy a little bit too, and so we just, we're not trying to be, or I'm not trying to be difficult, whatever council wishes, but it needs to have all of the information prior to simply making that. I will say that reports and update reports as part of a section in and of itself, I don't have a personal problem with that. I think that's a very good idea, and I think that the intention that I had with staff, and I think we've mentioned it a few times as well, my intention is to provide a CAO's report, an operational report, which is aligned with the next items on the agenda, which is aligned with your term plan. So in order to measure my success, as you indicate, my success is based on the efficient and effective delivery of service and efficiencies, you know, on time, on budget, and then also needing strategic directives that council has identified. So I would like to realign, and we're doing this now with staff, realign reporting so that it meets the clusters, enhancing the community efficiencies, realigning resources and all of that stuff. So I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to report on that and other things. But I just don't think that putting things on that without debating whether we can or not. I think you need staff input, test what we can, but not doing how often we do it. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
So Restool, did you have something?
I think most of my comments through you, Madam Mayor, were similar to what the CEO mentioned. We have put a lot of time into this in terms of revisions and what's been brought forward here, and if that issue is something else, so we can go back. And because it's specific to one area of the procedure of bylaw, I would agree that it's something we should do here at the table with everyone, because it's a very specific ask and would be an addition or amendment to this we'll have in front of us. I had other comments, but if that's the direction that we're going, then we'll come back and speak about this later and have a debate about it then. I'll, I'll.
Other comments on, on this specific issue right now, Counselor Stanley.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if I may ask, Counselor Tassier, what exactly is it that you're looking for? Are you looking for the staff to provide us with reports at every meeting? Is that what you're looking for? Or are you looking for a specific report? The reason I'm saying that is, if you're asking staff to provide us with all their reports at every meeting, we're never going to get through an agenda by 9:30 at night. So, because I'm sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barbeau, that the amount of reports that would be involved would be astronomical, that we would never get through our agenda. So my understanding was, the purpose of this had a, had a meeting or committee was for you guys to, you know, get to this point so that we as a whole don't have to go through it, right? So I don't know, that's what I'm just asking, if that's your request is to have special reports reported at every meeting?
Yeah, there's especially specific reports at each meeting, but they would have to determine what kind of report. So I'll bring it up at the, as an agenda items with more specific information.
I think that would be good, because I think as well, you want to give thought to roles and responsibilities and stating that's been done in the past. But there's certain statements that are being made on accountability. Yes, we have accountability frameworks, and yes, we have controls in our system. Yes, we have bylaws that have been approved, and I think that that needs to be discussed at, you know, at council with respect to what is it that you want to do? Do you want to be day-to-day overseers of management, which I have no problem. I have nothing, nor does any staff member have anything to hide. But I think it might take away a little bit from your future strategic direction and where you want to take this. So, so I think that that needs to be clarified, because I'm getting a sense that there might be some conflict or difference in interpretation roles at council.
Questions or comments? The only, the only point I would make to, just to that request itself, is that there is a bylaw on the book that, this 2009-55, which I have up in front of me, but I can also provide to the rest of council as a follow-up. And my opinion would be that maybe that, what you're asking for doesn't necessarily belong within the procedural bylaw, but if there is an appetite by council to review this transparency, accountability and transparency policy, that that could come back in front of council as a separate item. And we could look at what is written in that bylaw, and if we feel that there is a need for the mechanisms to be better defined to serve our needs. And that might be a way to address Counselor Tassier's concerns within the framework that's already there. So, you know, that, that might be another option that kind of allows us to move forward on the procedural bylaw issue, while still looking at what your concerns are around reporting and information that you, that you think may be missing from our purview. And that would be kind of my, my feeling on it, because there is already a bylaw in place that, that deals with the accountability and transparency piece. So.
So in any event, words classified to ensure you get what you want, whether it's in this bylaw or whether it's in that bylaw or in another bylaw, you see your previous statement of putting it on the agenda, I think is probably the appropriate course of action. So it's fully debated.
Okay, do I need to go back to? Okay, so Counselor Tassier, we'll talk and we'll look at this back to discuss on a whole, whether it's through the procedural bylaw, but we'll figure out a way to, to address that for you. Okay. Are there other questions, sections that would like to be specifically discussed by any members of council? Consent agendas, everything's clear on that, the, the reasoning behind it and how to work or within the consent agenda, if you want to pull items out, it is spelled out there? Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I guess just the one question would be, I know delegations earlier on, really early in our term, you mentioned potentially having like a time limit or some sort of, is there anything in there, the procedural bylaw that reflects that?
I'm just trying to find the section.
Through you, Madam Mayor, we have a time limit.
Yeah, we do.
It's, yes, it's 15 minutes, I believe, it's one delegation, 15 minutes. We used to have two in 10, 10 wasn't enough, and then you could wait. What ends up happening is there's really nice groups of people that come in and it's really hard to curtail. And we talked about being like, you know, the federal government where you're making depositions and they cut your mic off at that time, so you're halfway through a sentence. But, you know, being a small friendly community, it's tough. But certainly we already have a, a 15-minute deadline for delegations.
Madam Mayor, I just noticed that I did actually not carry over the time limit to the document, and I put that in.
Yeah, no problem, I agree that we should listen.
Good catch, Counselor Rivera.
I knew we had somewhere.
I don't think we should be cutting anybody off, but maybe after 45 minutes or something.
I'll just, a quick show of hands, because we are making change, a change here. Everybody's okay if Mr. Shum proceeds to add, re-add the time limit back on the delegations of 15 minutes? Is that what we're doing? Yes, yes. Thank you. Good catch, thank you. And any other questions pertaining to the document? So with that, so that's the only change. With that, everybody's in favor to allow staff to go back, present the final document for our approval at the next meeting. And we will look at bringing the transparency and accountability bylaw back as a separate piece to discuss the different types of reporting that, everybody okay with that? Put a show of hands. And then that will come back on the next agenda for our formal approval. I would like to just thank again Counselor Restool, Counselor Gagne, Counselor Tassier, and both Mr. Shum and Mr. Barbeau, for the time that that was put in to really work through this document bit by bit, and especially to Mr. Barbeau's, the bulk of the thinking on that. Well, be, and the bulk of the thinking. So, you know, her, her expertise in these matters was definitely a great help to all of us. Okay, so the next item up for discussion on the agenda is the term plan document. I'll start and then I'll pass it, pass it over to Mr. Barbeau for a couple of words. So you all remember back in January, we spent a lovely weekend together. There were donuts, there were sandwiches, and we did a lot of talking about what we see for our community and how we'd like to see us grow and develop and modernize, and the different ideas about issues that we can address in each of the wards and as a community as a whole. After we finished that weekend, there were all kinds of big sheets of paper with all kinds of scribbles on it and check marks and scoring. And our wonderful communications team took all those bits of information and review of the videos and went back and really tried to capture all of the ideas and thoughts that came out of that, of those two sessions. So what you're seeing in front of us today is a draft of, of the plan, but really kind of one step along the way. of one step along the way. And, you know, they've called it the data consolidation step. So the document in front of you is for all of us to take a look at and ensure that the things that, that were important to us and that we discussed appear in this document. And what will happen is after we have this discussion today, we'll go back and we'll do a little bit of further refining on the document, work with communications to sort them into kind of have higher level priorities and into, into buckets that kind of all make sense together and organize the content a little better so that it really comes across as, as actionable steps for both us and for staff to look at. And when we, when we organize those into the larger categories, you know, we'll really start to see some of the priorities for us as a community, you know, growing through economic development and attracting residents, our social services and, and health and well-being pieces, infrastructure, water and, and public works and all that kind of stuff. So, so there will be a little bit more form to it. But I, I really would like to thank both Cass and Kim, who I think did a really good job of capturing the spirit of what we did that day and really kind of capturing the principal priorities, the spot analysis that you'll see there. And, you know, you'll see on, on page six of that, the roadmap and where we are with this, with this draft, which is kind of halfway through the, the process. And by, I would think the next meeting, we should have a fairly finalized, I'll let Mr. Barbeau speak to that. But I, I think that that it's a nice looking document and I think it, it does capture a, a lot of what we spoke about.
No, you know, I have nothing really to add on behalf of staff. It's just a great start to a council session and it's very clear strategically and it's going to be great for residents following this process. The, the next step in terms of goals or objectives or consolidation, yes, maybe by the next government meeting, which should be this time. And then what I'll be doing with staff concurrently, we've got a few wires in the fire and I don't know at least which is budget, will be from a staff perspective, providing timelines, operation, and I don't know if anyone knows what a Gantt chart is or a chronogram or whatever, but put a project management into this so that we can look at this and then create a schedule as to continuously bring things forward to council or if they don't need council's involvement, just, you know, check them off and pull them off for council. And then, as I indicated in the past, I'm looking forward to reporting to council on a regular basis, the progress of where we're going with this term plan. And so there's a lot of work that has been done. It's a mutual admiration society, but I want to thank our mayor who worked with communications in providing this draft or this iteration of this step. And so it's been a, it's, it's been a great strategic approach and that's all I will say. But from a staff perspective, it's operationalizing this to get it done. So there's a lot of projects that you mentioned and, you know, we have to find timelines and when, resources and so on. So those are the next level after the level that her worship has talked about.
With that, I'll open the floor up. I hope you've all had a, a chance to, to read through and I did think that questions or comments or ideas on that? Counsel, Counsel Revard?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I know during our first budget meeting, Counselor Colling was, and I think all of us were all interested in finding out like the average household income. And I, I see a number here, but then when I went to compare it to the provincial average, I was shown numbers before taxes and after taxes. So one way we would be under the average and one way we would be over. So I would just like to know what this number is, before taxes or after taxes? Because it certainly changes a bit.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'd have to get back to you on it as, as the mayor indicated that our, our people did that. And so the assumptions were not provided with it. So I can get back to you and I can send a email to, oh, sorry, hand, it's one of those hand things.
Yeah, that, that one is the before. That one is the, is the average income, not the average after-tax income.
Counsel, we're above average. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Restool?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just, I, I just wanted to say, you know, congrats to the team working on this as well. The session, you know, going back to that, those days were great. I thought it was a good team building exercise as well and lots of good discussion. And I think, you know, the vast majority of our comments are included in here and I think the added info that's included about the household income and the dwellings and all of that stuff is really great. It's a good document for sure. So thanks to staff for that.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Counsel Gani?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I'm anxious to see the analysis and then start thinking about implementation. So good job on you, Mr. Barbeau and the team. I think we're heading in the right direction with this term plan.
Is there, is there anybody who felt any of their ideas or suggestions that were brought up during the term plan that, that anything was missed that they'd like to make sure is identified as part of the, the next draft? Because, you know, we do want to make sure that, that we captured the things that are important to each of you. So with that, what I'll do is if, if everybody's okay with what's been presented to them here, I'd just like to get a general confirmation that, that we move forward with the next step, which is preparing the final plan and kind of identifying those high-level priorities and, and categorizing the different things. And Mr. Barbeau, I'm sure will work on his end to work on the plan for Opera, Opera...
Operationalize. Can't say it twice.
Yeah, operationalizing, you know, what, what we come forward with. So a show of hands, we'll have staff move forward. Yes or no? Yes? Off we go. Thank you very much for your input on that. And again, I think staff did a great job and they captured it, but they've also made it look really pretty. And I, I called them after looking at the document that they put together as well. So thank you again to Cass and Kim who worked hard on that. Okay, the next item in general government is for OGRA delegation requests. So the OGRA, Ontario Good Roads Association Conference is being held on April 16th to 19th in Toronto. I will be attending the conference and there is an opportunity for us to put forward delegation requests for that event. And just a quick overview, delegations is when we request meetings with ministers or high-level government officials on specific issues. So with that, I'll, I'll have Mr. Barbeau speak to the OGR delegation requests and the recommendations that have come forward from staff.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Typically, you know, once councils are fully operational, they have ideas for a variety of different issues, they would like to speak to any minister, you know, with respect to any issue. But with respect specifically to public works and, and our roads and our infrastructure, the recommendation, and it's not before you, but the recommendation from the, I'll call them the people downstairs, is to seriously advocate on behalf of the Chalplain Bridge. The Chalplain Bridge is about $15 million and there's a couple of issues with respect, and it needs to be replaced. Now, throw a few threats here. Hopefully it's not too, you know, the, the risk of not doing those replacements or those upgrades or replacing the bridge is that there would be no bridge. And so that basically we're shutting down the Trans-Canada highway. And we have John Street for local traffic, so one could argue, is the bridge absolutely necessary? Well, certainly darn convenient, but we have local other ways around it. So we want to put forward, and I don't want to share the sales strategy publicly and have MTOC is coming. But there's a few things. First of all, to fund this bridge, because it's on a connecting link. So I don't know if all of you are familiar with connecting link. Connecting link is something where there's shared use of a highway between the province and municipality, where the actual ownership of the road is the municipalities, but that the province acknowledges that they have need for it as well. And the program for connecting link, which is age-old, is 90% of the province and 10% of us. The problem with that is that the project is 15 million. The connecting link program didn't have limits back in the day and then it was canceled. And so there was a real uproar, and it's not just Northern Ontario, this is all over southwestern Ontario and everywhere. But Timmins is an example, the road through Timmins, Highway 101, obviously a connecting link. Everything in Sault Ste. Marie is a connecting link, getting to the bridge and getting off and whatever. So there, there's a lot of that. So there's a real uproar. So they reinstated it and they, for the entire province, every municipality is 400, they have, I think their, their cap on an annual amount is 33 million. And the amount maximum per project under the connecting link program is 5 million. So obviously that's not going to, that's not going to work here. So there's a couple of options. A, we have to advocate on behalf that this cannot be considered connecting link. And B, there's been a strong discussion downstairs. We have some staff, you know, that have worked with MTO over a long time. They're failing to see why we, you know, we should be quit making a push to say there's so much risk for our ability and resources that we could advocate with them to take over ownership of the bridge in its entirety. And the reasons for doing that is they do have way more resources to manage a project of this magnitude of their engineering, their 19. But we're, we're spending a lot of time downstairs, a few people, planning this, this project. So there's a lot of reasons. So without putting the proposal together here tonight, that's the general, that's the general request is to get a delegation with Minister Mulroney and to make our case very strongly that we're going to need some help. And if that's the, you know, some help you're going to have a problem getting, you know, from North Bay to Sudbury because we'll shut you down. I'm just kidding. But it is our road and so we can maintain the bridge. So we have to have those discussions with the, with the province and see, find some sort of a solution in order for that highway to, to remain, remain open. So that would be the only request that we would have, Madam Mayor.
Questions or comments on Counselor Tessier?
Just to confirm that Highway 539 from Warren to River is, I know it's scheduled for 2023, but I don't know if that's something that can follow to share that.
That would be through you, Madam Mayor. That would be followed up with me and the, and the Director of MTO and I can get that information to you as early as this week. So that wouldn't be a delegation?
No.
That there's not an ask there?
How do you approve?
Yes, and it's not our highway, right? So it's just advocating to say, hey, we need it.
Counselor St. Louis?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Has there been any, so, you know, it's the Trans-Canada highway. Does the federal government have any say in this? Is there any way that we can approach? And I mean, I'm assuming that the guys downstairs probably thought of it before me, but is there any thought of approaching the federal government also if I cover this?
There, there would be some thought, but it would be, it is a provincial highway. And so by govern, by governance, it is really the province. It's called the Trans-Canada, so is Highway 11. So, but they're all provincial highways. And so, you know, we could, I think it would be incumbent upon the Government of Canada to find some solution or Government of Ontario to work with them as well. But I'm not aware that the Government of Canada would put any money on a provincial highway unless it's in the National Capital Region, which is, you know, Ottawa.
Counselor Pendleton?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a couple of questions. When was the portion of 10% the responsibility of the municipality coming into effect? And which left, including the bridge across town, is our portion of the 10%?
I don't quite, so, so the 10% or the connecting link program has existed ever since I've been here. So I don't know that it is never, that, that it hasn't existed. A lot of the work we've done on Front Street and on, you know, on Highway 64 up to Sabourane Road, that's also connecting link. We have used connecting link funding in the past, so it's always been there. So our portion, let's say if you have a million-dollar project, we would spend $100,000, they would spend $900,000. So I don't know if that answers your question, Counsel Pendleton?
No, I was just curious because it seems harsh for us as a small municipality to have a 10% stake in managing that piece of, the, the Trans-Canada. It's, it seems huge for a small municipality like us.
Perhaps you can help with the delegation? You can tell them that certainly, you know, the, the policy is a provincial policy. So it works for Sault Ste. Marie, it works for Sudbury, it works for Timmins and places in southern Ontario. I'm not aware of all the connecting link properties, but you can imagine that highways going through towns are probably common. So it's 90-10 for everybody.
Any other questions on this one specifically? Any other, anybody else have any other issues that they might identify as potential subjects for delegations?
There are other ministers there.
Yeah, although this is a good road, so there are almost every minister from every ministry, whether it's health, community, safety, obviously administrative transportation, infrastructure, economic development. So it is not a, it's not just a road conference. It is very municipally focused overall. Counselors, crushing?
Thank you, Your Worship. Because we've identified during the term planning that bringing affordable and reliable internet to the rural areas of the municipality is, I guess, one of the, the many priorities on the go, is there any possibility to put in a request for delegation to specific ministry? I don't know which ministry exactly would, would handle that type of request. But to make a sales pitch, just as a word of information, over the last few weeks, there's been almost $100 million awarded for communities in Ontario to bring in, you know, municipal broadband and to increase connectivity. If I'm not mistaken, it's the province's, I guess, sales pitch on this, but by 2025, they want everyone to have high-speed internet and the federal government's, I guess, milestone is by 2030. So maybe if we can look into exploring that opportunity.
And that's actually a, a great idea. And when we were at Roma, and we'll agree that that was one of the major policy initiatives for Roma was really pushing. It is, since Roma has happened, actually, Mr. Barbeau and I were contacted by a provincial national service provider who has actually been given a contract. They did a zoning, I don't know how you'd describe it. They, they mapped out the province and there were requests for proposals for each specific zone. And this was the company that was given the contract by the province to service our area. So we actually had a fairly long conversation, probably about an hour or so with this company. I don't even know if we can disclose.
I believe it's, I think it's not, or I think that was given.
It was a public?
I think so. So Kojiko was awarded, even though they're not our, they're not our cable provider, he used to think it's our cable provider, and I spoke to him about that. Kojiko was awarded the contract to provide high-speed internet everywhere for this area. KojiCo was awarded the contract to provide high-speed internet everywhere for this area. And they delineated some zones where the only zone, selfishly, that, that is kind of still going to be entered, or kind of not covered by them, still done by internet, is the most western portion of our territory. And that's just what's been awarded for now. So doesn't mean that we're not going to work at that. It's just KojiCo is going up to, I think, Pedantzi Road in Yuro. So that cachet and all of that will go. Unfortunately, Year Lake is left, left aside. And then I think there's another provider that, there's a line across, and I believe it's Bell, that's been awarded French River and going up. So it's a kind of a north-south line. So what's going to be involved in that is they're asking us for information on, on rights of way along our roads and so on and so forth. And so we're working at the, at that level to start providing them with some information. That's as far as I can remember.
Yeah, there is no specific timeline, except that they've been given the same directive as you've mentioned, which is the 2025. We've seen some preliminary maps which show, you know, a very nice coverage area up the Highway 64 corridor, through the underserved areas of field. And I believe they said this would all be five, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's very, it's a very interesting proposal, but it's very early on. Like, we had one call, and it was really to kind of help them get the information they need to solidify their plan a little bit more as far as what the challenges might be with running the actual, you know, cable and, and probably hardware, the wires. So it is something that, that actually is underway, and there has been a contract awarded for our area. We just don't have a specific timeline on that yet, so.
I think there may need be, but I think it's a little preliminary, but there may be a need to advocate for that corridor. Or if there's a slice that's not being added, we might want to push and ask them why. But at this point...
We have the opportunity at, you know, GRE to push, you know, the message. I think it'd be a nice, a great time to do it.
Yeah, because they, we looked at the map, the area that was right next to us, so very near Year Lake. They're, they're all little gehive cells. And the section west of us was not going to be serviced by the five. It was going to be serviced off of cellphone towers, as we know, and the end now for your stable internet. And the other good thing about this is that the infrastructure that they're putting in is not just going to serve internet, but every client that they, they expect to open up service to about a thousand new households in our underserved areas, which is a significant portion of our population. But it will offer cable, like cable TV or private TV, internet and home telephone service. So it will kind of open up that, that whole technology triad there for those areas.
Counselor Tessier?
Just a quick question. When you say west, is River Valley kind of in that empty zone, or?
I don't know.
Yeah?
That's why I hesitated.
Okay.
Because it could be covered on a line. And, you know, I don't think it's done by municipal jurisdiction per se. It could fall under a catchment area of west, which would end up being Bell. So we don't, I don't know. I have to explain that to you. If there's a need to advocate, though, you know, we could just put in a request. But, but if you give us the, you know, the leeway to find out, you want to make sure you're doing it at the right time and with the right amount of information. You don't want to be caught short.
I think it's made like a little bit early, but even the AMO in August, you know, there'd be...
Would have been my thought. I think it would be more, let it evolve a little bit, let's see where we're going, and then...
But a great idea to put on the radar, thank you. Anything else? Jamie, did I see? Okay, so, you know, with Counselor's blessing, staff will prepare the information to request a delegation for Olbra in regards to the Champlain Bridge. Show of hands in favor of that. Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to that. That'll be my, my first official delegation. If we get. It is an application process. They don't talk to anybody, but we will keep you all updated. The last section of our committee of the whole meeting is under planning. And for that, I will pass it to Counselor Tessier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the planning, I request an increase in some fees. I'll pass it on to Mr. Poulain to provide an explanation.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. As the memo states, building fees were increased back in 2018, but planning fees have not increased in 2011. As you'll see later on in the KPMG report, we refer to the municipality not reliant enough on user fees. And in the comparable analysis that we've done for both building and planning, you can easily see that our user fees for both building and planning are way under most of our similar-sized municipality and our neighboring communities as well. We've indicated in the comparable analysis what we are currently charging. In the blue column, basically, will provide information on what the new user fees are being proposed for. There's significant increase, but again, by increasing the fees, we generate additional revenue. And conservative estimates based on average years' revenue. If Counsel were to support the proposed fees, we anticipate that the Planning and Building Department could potentially increase their revenue by fifty to sixty-five thousand dollars yearly. That's based on projections. We don't think we're going to have a record year like we saw last year. But the fifty to sixty-five range is based on what we think the department will, will achieve this year, in this year's budget. I do want to point out, under building permit fee comparison, you will notice at the very bottom of the fee, the department is proposing a new administration fee for illegal construction. So I want to explain that. It's a new fee. And so I'll use an example. I get caught starting to construct a garage on my property without a building permit. CBO comes over, has a discussion with me, puts a stop order on the, on the construction, instructs me at that stage that a building permit is required and to provide all required documentation to acquire such permit. The, when somebody's caught building illegally, it creates a lot more paperwork, a lot more work, a lot more inspections. So there's obviously an additional cost. What this type of fee would also do is hopefully deter people from building illegally and to obtain the appropriate building permits prior to commencing their construction. The way we're setting this up, and other municipalities do exactly the same, is that we would charge, so I would come in, I would apply for my building permit, I would acquire my building permit. So on a thousand-square-foot garage, a building permit would be, let's say, three hundred dollars. So I would pay the three hundred dollars. Then the additional administration fee to have started construction prior to obtaining a building permit would be double that. So I would pay three hundred dollars for my initial building permit. Then I would get another six hundred dollar administration charge for building illegally. So it's, and then that, again, does not remove the ability for a CBO to charge an individual. So the CBO can charge, but when charges are laid, it goes through the court system. This would be an administration fee to try to deter illegal construction and to also recover some of the additional costs that the department has to incur by paperwork and additional inspections and whatnot. So that is something new that's being proposed, and we would cap it at twenty-five hundred dollars. So if somebody is building a two thousand-square-foot home and a building permit for a two thousand-square-foot home, let's say, is two thousand dollars, then the additional administration fee of double that would be capped at twenty-five hundred. So we would not charge an extra four thousand for that. So I don't know if I properly explained that, but that is something new this year. Also, if you look at the comparable analysis, you will see even though we're increasing the fees in both planning and building, we're still on average below our neighboring communities and the communities we're comparing to. So I don't know if there's any specific questions pertaining to any of this, but that's the, Madam Chair, that is the detailed explanation pertaining to the fee increase that we're requesting Counsel to consider.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, Miss Agar.
Through you, Madam Chair, Ms. Poulain. I just find that the new administrative fee for legal start would be good to have an example there. Because technically, if you double the cost, like if it's three hundred, you double the cost at six hundred? Well, you're technically doubling the cost of the initial cost, right? So would be nine hundred dollars that that individual would be paying. Could we just maybe clarify or put an example as far as numbers, so it's not misinterpreted? Because here it just says double the building permit fee?
Yes.
So if I pay three hundred, I technically expect I'll pay six hundred.
Yeah.
Because I'm doubling the cost. Yeah, exactly.
I understand exactly what you're saying. It's doubling the initial fee?
Yeah.
So the initial fee of three hundred, we're doubling that? So double the value of that, it's actually triple, you're right. Penalty itself would be twice the amount of the initial fee. So, yeah, we can put proper wording, so it's easier to understand and provide an example. Absolutely, yeah.
Very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Pendleton?
Yeah, it's, now the way that I understand it, it's, it's a little steep, I think. Doubling it, I think, would have been a good message. Tripling it for somebody who does it not intentionally, doesn't know if he needs a permit to change a window or siding or whatever, it seems more on the side of a cash grab than a, that's my thought.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
I'm actually happy to see this come before Counsel, because when you look at what our current, current fees are and the comparison, which is a really great tool for us, it's clear that we're leaving a lot of money on the table and a lot of revenues on the table for the municipality. And I'm actually surprised that even with the increases proposed, we're still far below many of the comparators. Actually, we're lower than any of the other comparators on, on that chart for, for a lot of those things. It is, for many of those items, it is a significant increase. So, you know, in other circumstances, I might actually say, let's get ourselves closer to what the comparators are, because otherwise, we'll be back here in another two years and we'll be another two years behind what other people are doing. But I think that this is a great start. And I think that one of the benefits we have is for, we talked about in planning, the fact that West Nifasing does not have development charges. And so, you know, even though these might look like a big increases on, on kind of a one-off, I think our region is still very attractive for investment and development. So that's my feedback on that. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So our next step is to, to vote on this?
It would be, if there are any other comments and there's a general approval of it, then you would bring it forward. There is a time issue, but if, one of the only points that were brought up, or the only point that was brought up is the level of the penalty or administrative fee. And that would be maybe something I would ask, whether anybody else agrees to that, if that needs to be amended in any shape or form, as for Counselor Poulain's step on it. And then if we know that we've fully discussed everything, then it'd go to a resolution next, next meeting.
So I'll just need to ask if there's anybody that agrees with Mr. Pendleton's comment about just reducing to just the normal, instead of doubling it, just making it the same as the fee of the license? Yes, Counselor?
Through you, Mrs. Chair. How, do you, do we know how many illegal builds there are in average in a year? I imagine the last few years have been quite crazy, but, you know, on average, do we know if it's five, ten, one, twenty, or?
Counselor's probably more than we know. But the numbers have certainly increased over the last couple of years. But Counselor, I can come back with more specific numbers of those that have been caught. But it is becoming problematic. It is taxing on the department. And, and a lot of the illegal construction, basically, we are notified through neighbors or whatnot, and that's how it all comes about, and it is taxing on the department. So hopefully, this will deter people from doing that, because the penalty would be severe in that case. So, but I can certainly get you those, those specific measures, Counselor.
Thank you.
So just, so through you, Chair, because it's a comprehensive fee increase, that's why I would just, you know, if you get the consensus that it would be acceptable to, to a vote, you know, then, then we would bring it next meeting for a vote. I'm only suggesting that, you know, the opportunity to discuss whether you're in agreement with Counselor Poulain, because I wouldn't want to have something shoved down, you know, you know, just make sure that it's fully, fully, you know, whatever. So if the rest of Counsel are agreeing with the double penalty, you know, so it's now the triple cost, it's the fee plus a double penalty, which equals three, then, then we'll, we won't amend it. We'll bring it forward that, that way.
Not sure I understand. So Mr. Poulain was going to bring some...
Does anybody agree with Counselor Poulain? Yes, that's it. See, see, too, see, see.
So...
You think I'm on target, it's on four steps, yes, we pass, get a full MXM, so that's, yes. If you deck out, who would deck out, if X equals the, yes, yes.
So should I say who would, please?
Yeah, that's right.
At Counselor Pendleton with his comment? Think that as a, no?
So it sounds like we'll bring this forward for approval next meeting.
So we'll bring this forward for next meeting? Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Tessier. The timing is absolutely perfect. We're at about one and a half minutes before eight o'clock. I would entertain that special motion for that special time of day. Do you have one done, or?
I'm just going to...
So I have Counselor Nichol and Counselor Rebar.
Scotty Lee. It is moved by Counselor Nichol and seconded by Counselor Rebar. At approximately eight PM, a motion was tabled for ten-minute recess.
All in favor? Chair, thank you.
And.
So.
How bad are you? Wish for it to come in and.
Well, I got to the front, they said the door was closed. So I just. So how does the presentation work?
I always got it on her laptop. We'll put it up on the screens.
Excellent.
Yeah. I think they're right.
I'll, I'll do an introduction.
Are you ready? I am. I take instruction well, I just need people to tell me.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. So the next item on the agenda, first item on the agenda, but we're moving back to item four point one, which is a delegation from Mr. Oscar Poloney from KPMG. KPMG were contracted to perform a review of municipal services. And Mr. Poloney is here to cover the results of that and answer our questions. So welcome to West Nipissing, Mr. Poloney, we're happy to have you.
We're ship members of council. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here today to provide council with a presentation of our service delivery review. So maybe next slide, please. So just for the information to council, this is a review that was undertaken during the pandemic. It was actually completed a bit of a while ago, if you will. So there has been some time since the review was completed versus when we're here today. And basically, it was looking at municipal services and service deliveries for West Nipissing. And what it was really intended to do is to identify opportunities for increasing effectiveness and efficiency. So making sure that the municipality was able to do what it wanted to do from a service perspective and to do it as efficiently as possible. It was funded through the province's municipal modernization program. And as a condition of the funding, there was a requirement for a report, and that report was to be in public, and we have issued our report to the municipality, as I've mentioned some time ago. So in terms of the review, there were a number of different work elements that were undertaken between KPMG and staff of the municipality. There was documentation review where we did look at different pieces of information relating to the municipality, what you do and how to do it. There was significant consultation with staff. We undertook a variety of different process maps, and this is a lean methodology that looks to identify opportunities for efficiencies. We did look at your policy environment, and there was a comparative analysis that was undertaken where we did some analysis of indicators compared to other similar municipalities. And the purpose of the presentation tonight is really to provide council with a bit of an executive summary of what we found. So the next slide, please. So in terms of the report, and we've identified a number of what we call key themes. a number of what we call key themes. These are major findings that come out from our review. And the first comment that we identified was the fact that when you look at West Nippising and the municipality, there is a very high degree of what we call mandatory or essential services. And these are services that, as a municipality, you are required by legislation to deliver, or you are required in order to maintain public health and safety to deliver as well. So if you go to the next slide, please. Typically, when you look at municipal services and service delivery reviews, there's a tendency to break municipal services down into four buckets. Once again, those services that are mandatory in nature, if you think about the legislative environment that the municipality works under. So the Ontario Building Code defines how you do building permits. The Fire Protection and Prevention Act speaks to how you do fire services. The Police Services Act requires a police service board for all municipalities. There's a whole host of legislation that overlays what you do. And so when you look at your services and your budget, half of what you do, you do because legislation requires you to. So it's important to recognize that from a municipal perspective, you don't have a lot of discretion over half of your services. And the comment that I will make, ladies and gentlemen and members of council, is this. The municipal act that applies to West Nippising is the same municipal act that applies to the city of Orme. You don't get a pass because of size. On top of that, the second category that you look at are services that are considered to be essential in nature. These are services that you're not necessarily required to provide, but you do provide, once again, for public health and safety and for protection. There is no requirement for municipalities in Ontario to deliver water services. But the reality is, is water is instrumental to public health, so you deliver it from an essential service. When you look at other types of services, there's those services that we consider to be traditional in nature. So not required by legislation, not required for health and safety, but they're actually expected based on what you do. There's no legislative requirement to have an arena. There's no real health and safety issue to have an arena. Now, community people may say you need to for health and recreation purposes, but it is expected in Northern Ontario. So when you start to peel the onion in terms of the services that you provide, what you very quickly discover is there's very little that you do that's actually discretionary in nature that you can cut. And so from council's perspective, when you do a service delivery review, it's important to recognize, while you can change how you deliver services, while you can change service levels in certain instances, the ability for you to find a magic bullet and to cut 20% of your budget by saying there's gravy in the system really doesn't apply. So there's a bit of a process there. And in the report, there's an appendix where we have service profiles that very much explain why you do what you do. So next slide, please. So when you look at the key themes, as I mentioned in the introduction, one of the things that we did look at was a comparative analysis, where we took West Nippising and we compared you to other municipalities. And what we looked for specifically were three things. We wanted municipalities of comparable number of households. So I've been doing this for 32 years. I never speak in terms of per capita. And the reason why, council, is because when the garbage truck stops on my street, it stops at houses. Whether there's three people living in the house or five people living in a house, or one person living in the house, it stops at the houses. And so we always denominate on a per household basis, which is why when we select comparators, we look at similar numbers of households. The second thing that we look at, council, is we're looking for single-tier municipalities. And the reason why is because if you get into Southern Ontario, for example, where they have counties, oftentimes you'll find the services are spread across two governments. And I'm from Sudbury. And when you read the paper, oftentimes people will compare the city of Greater Sudbury to the city of Barry, which is not a good comparison. And the reason why is because certain services are actually delivered by the county of Simcoe, not the city of Barry, whereas in a single-tier municipality, Sudbury does it all. Very similarly, a single-tier municipality like West Nippising is going to look very different than a lower-tier municipality in the South because of the counties. Then the third thing that we look at, council, and it's an important distinction, is we always look at Northern Ontario. And the reason why we look at Northern Ontario is because while there are single-tier municipalities in the South, there are no DSAPs. So in terms of how you deliver certain services, those are actually different as well. So you have to be careful about this. Now, when we ran the analysis and we looked at the comparators, we found that your financial indicators, generally speaking, fared very fairly compared to the other municipalities. Next slide, please. So in the report, what you'll find is there's an appendix that speaks to these comparators, and there's a number of financial indicators that we looked at. And this one, I actually wanted to put up, council, because this, we find, is a very meaningful comparator for addressing questions around affordability. So in the analysis, we talked about residential taxation as a percentage of per household income. And so what you'll find is that, on average, in West Nippising, household owners are paying a comparable percentage of their income for municipal taxes as other municipalities. If you were on the high end of this range, then what we would suggest is there's maybe a burden that's higher than other municipalities, so you may want to look at affordability. But we don't necessarily see that in West Nippising. So once again, your comparators pretty much consistent with other municipalities comparable. So no real issues from a financial perspective that we flagged in the review for concern. So next slide, please. I did mention affordability, and it is a valid concern on the part of councils, particularly in periods like you have today, where you've got inflation running the way that you do. What's interesting, though, council, is in the analysis, we actually talked about the distribution of the tax burden. So if you look at the next slide, what you will find is that over the last couple of years covered by the review, the majority of taxpayers in West Nippising have been experiencing tax increases of $5 a month or less. So I know from council's perspective, there's always concerns about affordability, and they are valid. Part of the challenge, though, at looking at averages, is you have a tendency to lump the low with the high. What you can see from this graph, council, and this is taken from the report, is over the last two years of the analysis, the tax increases for households generally has been $5 a month or less. And I'm not trying to be flippant when I say this, but I spend more than that on coffee at Tim Hortons. So it's important to recognize where you are because from a financial decision-making perspective, if you did have affordability concerns, it would drive a very different policy environment. It would drive a very different strategic direction than what we see in West Nippising. So next slide, please. Now, as I mentioned, we use lean process mapping as part of the service review. And what it does is it's a facilitated approach to breaking down how you actually deliver services. We look at them in individual steps, we look at them sequentially, we try to get some sense as to the value. And when you do lean process mapping, it really lets you identify four different things. Do you have areas for opportunities for efficiency? Are you using manual processes versus automated processes? Are you duplicating work efforts, where people are keying things in twice? Are you using hard copy documentation, which complicates how do you actually retrieve documents? So that's one of the benefits of lean process mapping. The other thing it does is it looks at customer service experience and limitations. The example I always use, council, was when I registered at Laurentian University in 1987, I stood in line at the registrar's office for an hour and a half. And I rolled up, and I finally got to the counter, and I registered, and I pulled out my cheque book, because back then, we still used cheques. And I said, okay, I'm ready to pay. And they said, you can't, you have to go to the treasury function and pay. And I said, where's that? And they said, it's across the hall. So I got out of that line, went into line behind people I stood in line in for an hour and a half, and I paid. And I said, am I done? And they said, no, you have to go back to the registrar's office and show proof of payment. And that is a customer service experience. And council, I use that example all of the time. We found that last month in another municipality, where for vital statistics and for fighting administrative monetary penalties, they actually have to get in and out of different lines in the building. So that's customer service experience, and process mapping helps you identify this. The third area that process mapping helps you with is internal controls, where you look for gaps in your financial systems to be able to say, do we have a potential exposure that we need to cover up? And admittedly, this betrays the fact that, by nature, I'm an accountant and I'm an auditor. And then the fourth area that we look at is with respect to risk management. So this is issues around potential risk exposures, both financial risk, litigation risk, reputational risk, and do you have exposures that you're not aware of? This comes down to things like waivers and agreements and contracts for use of your recreational facilities. And if something happens, could I potentially sue you? So on the next slide, we've actually provided an example of the process maps, and it's basically a flow chart that outlines the approach. There's an appendix that covers it for a number of key services. What you'll find is everywhere that there's a colored dot, that's a finding. So in the report, we talk about what we found and what a potential course of action could be. And I will say this, council, there's nothing we've seen at West Nippising we haven't seen elsewhere. In terms of manual processes, paper documentation, customer service impacts, the reality is, is all municipalities can improve their services. There is nothing so perfect, it cannot be improved. So that was a key finding, and we've identified a number of points for consideration of your staff. So next slide, please. What we found as well, though, council, is when we looked at your services and service offerings versus the resources that were behind it to support those services, we actually found gaps. And those gaps emerged because we would suggest, council, there were investments in core competencies that a municipality of your size should have made, that you didn't. And council, I want to be very clear. It is not our place to dictate strategy to you, to dictate policy to you, but it is our point to, it is our place to point out, for example, that in comparison to other municipalities, particularly of your size, there's things we would have expected to see that we didn't see. Things around information technology, things around human resources, things around strategy and policy development. So what you quickly realize when you do the service review, the process mapping and elsewhere, when we have conversations with your staff, we find gaps. And we find gaps that in a municipality of your size, we would not expect to see. And in some cases, there's actual risks associated with this. So if you think about information technology, for example, it's all about cybersecurity and the potential risk that you have exposure there. From a human resources perspective, it's the concept of the potential for lawsuits because of wrongful dismissal, the concept because of issues around labor relations. Similarly, if you think about the regulations for the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disability Act, what it takes to actually put a report on your website that's compliant with AOD. And it's not something that you can do in two minutes. And with respect to your treasurer, ask your treasurer to do. Like, we do it for municipalities, we have specialists who do this, and it literally takes days. So there's a number of gaps that we found from a competency perspective, from a capacity perspective, where it doesn't appear the investments were made, and you pay the price. IT, for example, support for digitization of processes, not there. So next slide, please. The last point that I would make, and once again, there's the question of how you want to do things. What I would suggest, council, is based on the benchmarking, you're less reliant on user fees than other municipalities your size. And so what that means is you have a tendency to rely on taxation. And there's always a balance between user fees and taxation. But it comes down to fairness. If people, specific populations, use a service, they should pay more for that service through user fees than through municipal taxes that spreads it everywhere. So the theory with respect to water, wastewater, is, generally speaking, 100% cost recovery through user fees. If you get water, you pay for water, if you don't, you don't. Some places build in what's called a fire protection charge on the levy to cover the cost of municipal buildings, to cover fire capacity, that type of stuff. Parks and recreation typically not 100% user fee recovery, because if that's the case, only rich kids would play hockey. So there's always this balance in play. But what I would suggest, council, is your user fees are actually towards the low end of your age. The other thing that we found, council, is there is a tendency in the municipality to use your own resources as opposed to contractors. And I know contracting out is a challenging conversation, and I know there's pros and cons associated with it. But there are services where we would have expected, based on what we see elsewhere, for more contractors than you have now. And it's your choice to decide how you choose to deliver this service. It's just from a best slash common practice perspective, you're actually a bit of an outlier with respect to both of those. Once again, not our place to dictate policy, but we did want to highlight it. So these are sort of the key themes, the major themes, if you will. And admittedly, I'm trying to synthesize 147-page report into six different slides, but that's the bulk of it. I think there's some things you do well, the indicators are positive, but at the end of the day, clearly opportunities for improvement as well. So next slide, please. So in terms of suggested courses of action, there's really five or five things that we suggested the municipality may want to concentrate on. And these, once again, are suggestions. Typically, what happens with a service review is we provide our recommendations, staff then pick it up and say, this is what KPMG said, these are the things we agree with, these are the things we don't, this is our plan moving forward. So we do talk about ongoing process improvements to look at how you refine them to get them as efficient as possible to make sure you maximize the customer experience. These are incremental changes. Start using PDF instead of hard copy. Stop using Excel for this. If this is duplicate, pick one and move on. The second thing that we looked at is the concept of strategy development. And, and council, what this is, is really a request on the part of staff at the time to say, it would be helpful if council advised us what the policies were, what the service levels were, what the directions were from a governance perspective, so that we can operationalize that. And I think at the time, that was seen as absent. There's the concept of looking at potential for service level adjustments and also looking at alternative service delivery. So some services, the question is, is do you want to change the service levels as a means of coming in line with other municipalities, potentially saving money, alternate service delivery, your resources versus external service providers? When you look at municipalities, two services that traditionally have higher involvement of contractor, winter roads maintenance, because it provides you with flexibility, and garbage collection. Now, I will say, council, I know of one municipality in Southern Ontario where they had contracted out garbage collection, and they took it back. And the reason why I took it back was because the contractors were failing on the service level. So there's all sorts of things that you need to consider when you do this. But typically, your staff would approach this as part of a budget process to bring opportunities forward to council for your consideration. And then the last point around revenue generation, this is the concept of non-taxation funding sources, specifically around user fees. Both new user fees, where you don't have them, and the potential for increased users. Now, council, once again, these are opportunities. These are provided to the municipality for your consideration and suggestion. If staff and council turn around and say, thank you, Oscar, we're not interested, that's your purview. The point of the service delivery review, though, was to put it on the table. What I would suggest is with the new council, the concept of strategic priorities, direction, service levels, I think that would help to inform the municipality significantly. So, your worship, members of council, that concludes our presentation. I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here today. I will say it is very much a pleasure to be here in person as opposed to on a screen. If there are any questions, more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poloney, excellent presentation. Any questions, members of council, for Mr. Poloney? Yes, then, Mr. Colonel.
Yes, I'm just very curious to see if, have you got any more examples of service of, service level, like you mentioned, roads, winter roads? Got other examples like this that we could do, like subcontracting and stuff like this?
Garbage collection, facilities maintenance, outdoor maintenance, winter roads maintenance, there's certain services that. There's certain services that you will never contract out. You know, they're hard, they're hard to think, your building department, for example, that type of stuff. So we can provide your staff with a list. I know we've discussed this at the time. Those would be sort of the big opportunities, if you will. I will, I will caution, counsel, you need to go into contracting out with your eyes open. Because what you will often find is, once you move into a municipal service by contracting out, sometimes it's very difficult to get that back. And you can get it back, it becomes exceptionally expensive to do it. And part of the challenge that you have is you need to make sure that from a negotiation and a supply perspective, you don't get into a situation, counsel, where somebody gives you a start of a deal on the first contract, and on the second contract, when they know they've got you, that's when the price increases come in. When you look at contracting out in the area of winter roads maintenance, for example, nobody contracts out 100%. What you do is you pick and choose your routes, you pick and choose which plow routes you want to use. In certain cases, you may use contracting out for capacity. The only case where you see contracting out of winter roads maintenance 100% is in Southern Ontario, where counties contract out to the lower tier. Other than that, the concept of that all the way out goes there. Garbage collection is something, as I've mentioned, that has a lot of heavy private sector involvement. The reason why you can have that is because there's a number of different companies that you can go to, so the market stays honest. Now, let's be very honest with you, counsel, you're not in the GTA. So it's different in Northern Ontario, obviously. But those are, those are some of the examples. Who cuts the grass in the summertime, for example? Who does facilities maintenance? Some municipalities contract out information technology. What I would suggest to you, councillors, you're actually too big not to have your own IT function. So while you can contract out IT, I wouldn't suggest you do it. You may want to look for special types of IT, cybersecurity protection, for example, where you can take out to a specialty firm. So there are places you can go, and we're happy, once again, to refresh the list and share it with your staff. Those are some of the bigger examples. Public Works is the very heavy one. The other concept that you may want to look at, counsel, is alternate service delivery, which means partnering with other municipalities. So if you think about building inspections, for example, you do it, Markstey Warren does it, Noelville does it, St. Charles does it. The question is, is do you want to go to a single shared service arrangement for building inspections where you're sharing the staff? So that's a different way to get efficiencies and economies of scale without necessarily getting the private sector in. You also see it sharing of fire services, sharing of fire chiefs, the concept of union, union libraries. So sorry, just, just to let you know, I just came from the township of Nipissing, where they're in a shared arrangement with the council, right? So that's, not that. And also the comment of sharing library, sharing library CEOs. So when you look at alternate service delivery, we don't only call it contracting out because there are those opportunities for shared services. So councillor, I hope that answers the question.
Anybody else?
I, I actually have one or two questions. I, I know part of the report deals with, you know, finding efficiencies within certain areas. So when you look at environmental services and stuff. But oftentimes, some of those recommendations also come with a kind of a heavy impact on service, service levels to residents, right? So, you know, when you, when you look at some of the, I would think that for our municipality, one of the challenges is having a lot of physical infrastructure spread out over a very large geographical area. And so I'm sure that there are ways that we could be more efficient, but the, the balance between that efficiency piece and how we, how we maintain service levels for all of our residents. I don't know whether you can speak to that from, from kind of the perspective of West Nipissing and the challenges that, that come with a territory like ours.
So, your worship, when you, when you look at the process maps, the majority of the processes, if not all of them, were administrative in nature.
Okay.
And so it's not, like, we did not look at how you plow roads or run the Zamboni at the arena, because that is a service delivery issue. What we looked at is how you processed payroll. So from an administrative process, from an efficiencies perspective, the real intention of the process maps were on your admin processes behind the scenes.
Okay.
As opposed to, how does it impact the customer? Now, in some cases, it'll impact the customer experience by not making them go across different hallways. What I, what I would suggest, your worship, is the more meaningful conversation and the more germane is around service levels. So not necessarily how you deliver the service, but what level of service do you provide? So the city of London, for example, doesn't pick up garbage once a week. They pick it up on a Monday, and then next week I'll be on a Tuesday, the next week I'm on a Wednesday, the next week I'm on a Thursday. But guess what? They don't pick up anybody's garbage on Friday. So what that means is, every five weeks, I get garbage picked up four days a week. And so that's an, that's an example of a service level reduction. And that, I think, your worship, is probably more telling from that impact perspective, because that's where your residents will really feel it. As opposed to a behind-the-scenes, this is how we process payroll, that's more in-your-face. And that, I would suggest to you, counsel, should be addressed as part of your budget process. And that requires the approval of council to do. And I'll be, I'll be very frank with you, counsel. I'm a big believer in the delineation between governance and operations. And with respect, counsel, I don't think your staff need to come to you to say, this is how we process payroll. That's an operational issue. But if they're going to cut the number of X, and I want to say firefighters, but I'm not, because I don't want to put that out there. But that's an example, any change in service levels actually needs to come in front of council, because that's your direction. And to your point, your worship, that's how you balance it, and that's how you control it, because municipal governance, which suggests service level changes, have to come here. Operational changes, that's the purview of your staff.
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Mr. Pallone, thank you. Same university, I'm a year ahead of you. But in the same program, too. I was just commenting to somebody about the change. I drove there this weekend, some of the buildings that are there that weren't there when I was there. But thanks a lot. I think what's going to happen now is that there's a bit of a communication issue here. You're expected to have the document in front of you. They will be, the full document will be sent to you for, for the entire review to council, probably this morning or tomorrow morning?
Already.
Or already, good. And then at that point, we'll have, and we'll pick apart the variety of different suggestions and recommendations to address the gaps that Mr. Pallone offers at upcoming meetings. So, as with the Fire Master Plan that we're hoping to have in everything, this is, you know, a review that was asked actually by staff. Oddly enough, typically, staff are hide and don't want to show their weaknesses. But I thought it was good to put it out there. Actually, work with council and staff together to strategically improve this organization for the future. So it was great working with Mr. Pallone and his team. And we will be addressing the detail. There has been some comment with respect to the delays, there's a lot of reasons for that. That won't be mentioned, but I thought that the environment is appropriate now. And so we're looking forward to moving forward with this document amongst others to improve our processes. Thanks, Oscar.
Thank you. And, your worship, just, and, Mr. Barbo, if, if for whatever reason you'd like us back, once you've had a chance to digest, happy to come back.
Thank you very much. From, from a council perspective, so Mr. Farm did send an email with the full, I think he said 147 pages of the operational review. So likely, you wouldn't have had an opportunity to read it in full between when the agenda was put out and when it was. But you know, I do have two weeks to kind of look over it in detail. And we will be bringing it back to kind of discuss the details of what's in that report. And I think we're going to find that there's a lot of ways that, you know, as we're getting close to having our term plan completed, that maybe not necessarily for this year, but especially for next year, using this operational review to make sure that priorities or changes that have been identified that need resources in order to operationalize. You know, we can start looking at this and really considering it over the next year and how we can, how we can take some of these suggestions to improve what we have into, over the course of retirement. I think it will end up being a document that is a reference for us through the term. And I thank you and your team for all the work that was clearly put into it. I really do appreciate it. It will be, it will be an excellent resource for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. On, on a timeline here. We're going to move back into business section. And 9.2 is for the authorization on. It is moved by Council Mitchell and seconded by Tressie Mark. Whereas at a meeting of council held on Friday, the 21st, 2022, council considered a report concerning the future of the Cash Bay Trailer Park. And whereas council agreed to the disposition of the property, be it resolved, the property located at 74 Teal Road, being part of roll number 485205000029400, being the Cash Bay Trailer Park, be declared surplus to the needs of the municipality and be disposed of in accordance with the municipality's bylaw 2021-18. Questions and comments? Councillor Tessier?
Yes, I'd like to request that this be deferred, because after reviewing the information from the request for proposal and information to the answers to the questions at the last meeting, there's definitely information that was received from residents that are missing. Also, the, the, the estimate that was provided, $80,000, I think it's, it's low, because there's additional, that is, that was based on 45 trailers. And there could be a possibility that there is a, not as much as a net loss. There's issues with, if there's five, the five trailers that were added, was it approved by the municipality to have those on the lot? How was the municipality monitoring the operation to make sure that the operator was following the lease agreement? Because as many indication that the operator was not meeting the responsibilities after speaking with the residents of the trailer park. And there's also options that possibly, that the park could, could give a profit if it's managed properly.
Okay, and what would you like to defer it to?
One month, the next to give a chance for the staff to be able to prepare a report.
Okay, okay, so there's a motion to defer on the table. Is there a secondar for that motion? Mr. St. Louis? Okay, all in favor of deferring?
Good.
Oh, sorry.
Can we?
When there's a motion on the floor for a deferral, only the deferral can be discussed.
So? So through you, Madam Chair, can we discuss the deferral? Is that what you're saying?
You can only discuss the deferral itself. You can't discuss the reasons for the deferral, other than what has been.
No, which is okay. So as for the deferral, would I be permitted to discuss? Councillor Tessier asked for a deferral of a month. Am I permitted to discuss the deferral to be longer? That's what I'm saying.
That would be, that would be an amendment to the, to the motion to defer.
Okay. So I would like to propose an amendment to the deferral, if possible. Now on that note.
Now we have to only deal with the amendment.
Okay. So how long would you like, how long would you like the deferral to be?
I need a secondar on that motion first.
But does he need to say till the end before there's a secondar? So can we get a time additional?
No, I didn't say an additional month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I didn't say an additional month. However, do I get an opportunity to explain why I want to extend it? That's right. Okay. So I would like a deferred, probably till the end of the summer. I would like to give an opportunity to an individual that will take over this park to see if they can make it work. This park in Cash Bay worked for many, many years. I'd like to give an opportunity to an individual that would be interested in putting his resources, putting his time, putting his work and his effort to make this park great again, like it used to be, and give us an opportunity to, you know, keep the residents content and happy as opposed to getting rid of another park and the possibility of selling the park and somebody coming in and closing it and losing another park. So I would like to defer till at least the end of the summer to see if an individual that does take it over is able to put the time and effort and the dedication in it.
So I'll, I'll just, before we, I'll, two things, I'll need a secondar on the motion to amend the deferral. Is there someone? And I'll need a firm date. If I'll, I'll maybe ask the Director of Community Services what that would entail in terms of, he said, end of summer.
Well, the end of the camping season is September 30th.
Okay, is that?
That'd be sufficient.
So there's a motion to amend, Councillor Tessier's, Councillor Tessier's requested one month. There's a motion on the floor to amend the deferral to September 30th, seconded by Councillor Padday. So we'll vote on the amended, the motion to amend the deferral. So in favor, I'll get the, sorry.
Sorry. I know there, there are financial implications, especially if you vote to the summer. So how do we address those?
Right now, we can only vote on the deferral.
Okay, so we have a second, a motion to defer, a secondar on the motion to defer, a motion to amend the deferral, which is what we're dealing with now. We have a secondar on the motion to amend the deferral. All those in favor, don't we have to approve the deferral first?
No, we have to. They're, they're both, they're both to defer to different dates.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to amend the motion to defer, which would be until the end of summer, just so we're clear, can I please see a show of hands? It's three that, that is defeated. There is now on the table a motion to defer for one month. And it, oh no, no questions or comments? Okay, can I see a show of hands, all those in favor of deferring the Cash Bay Trailer Park item for one month? Okay, so the original motion is now back on the floor. I'll take questions or comments on the, on this item. Councillor St. Louis?
So is there a possibility, then, if this is going to go to sale, that we can add in the sale that the owner purchasing this, this land can agree to leave it as a trailer park for a minimum of five to eight years or something to that effect?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Depend on, sorry, three, Madam Chair. It's council's agreement of purchase and sale to see what the terms are. And if council directs that there are specific terms to the agreement of purchase and sale, that was what staff would, would put into it. And whoever was willing to, to take those terms would be the person who would offer, I suppose. But it's entirely within council's purview to dictate how they want to sell and what conditions are on that sale.
So would that be decided today, or that will be at a future time? So would that be decided today or that will be at the time?
I think it would, through you, Madam Mayor, I think it would probably have to be decided now before we list it for sale or declare for surplus. Otherwise, it would be just declared surplus and listed for sale. I mean, we obviously can put conditions of a, of a closing date should we feel that the purchaser is not somebody who's expecting to run it as a going concern. We can put a closing date for the end of this, this term to ensure everybody's satisfied. But other than that, I believe council would need to give us more direction as to what their wishes.
Okay. How would I take that approach?
I support.
So I need a little guidance here.
Well, so one way of directing it is there's a question, it's not a motion or a, it's not an amendment, it's a discussion. But I mean, if we want it to be really technical, you can propose another amendment to this and putting a condition of that it be used for the same thing for a specific period of time and then see if that amendment passes.
Counselor Palay?
I would certainly support this, what Mr. St. Louis is saying, just for the simple fact that I, after the last meeting, I spoke to a few of the residents there, the tenants, and I know a little bit more of the history and the Cache Bay. The emphasis last meeting was, we're not in the business of competing with other trailer parks. Well, Cache Bay Trailer Park has got no beach, don't rent cabins, they don't rent boats, they don't rent dogs, et cetera. So they're not competing with other trailer parks. So what I'm saying is, the people from Cache Bay were smart enough to buy that property in the seventies when the, the, the interest rates were high. And the, the people that've been, that's been there since 30 years plus, they were telling me stories, they were part of them building the park. So it would, it's not, it's not fair for us to take a decision that fast for all those people that put, put in the work. So for sure, I would support Mr. St. Louis's proposal. So they don't show these people out. Some of them have been there over 30 years. And if we go to the numbers, we didn't get the right numbers the last, the last meeting. There's, there's, I've, I've calculated all this. I used to own the lot for 16 years. And there's potential to make 150,000 easy. COVID is gone now, so it would be profitable. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not sure that we want to imply that the numbers that were provided by staff were incorrect unless there's some kind of evidence that that is actually true. But outside that, I do appreciate your comments and the fact that you took the time to speak to the residents. Mr. St. Louis, is it to your intention to put, to propose an amendment to this?
So yes, through you, Madam Mayor, if that's the process is to put an amendment, then yes, I would appreciate putting amendment to the sale of the land. I get it that it's going to be sold, and to me, that's unfortunate. However, if at the very least we're able to, like Mr. Barbour said, to the end of our term, because we might not be here at the end of the, of three and a half years from now, but if we're able to at least ensure the individuals that are staying there, that they're going to be there at least the end of our term, I think that would be fair on, on behalf of our council to ensure that for them.
Okay, so you would like the amendment to be written as a condition of the sale?
As a condition of the sale.
That it continues to operate as is? Like as a, like?
I, through you, Madam Mayor, I think what, what Mr. St. Louis is proposing is that it, there be a, be disposed of conditional upon remaining a trailer park operation until the end of 2026. Is that correct?
Correct, through whomever purchases it. I'm not saying that the municipality needs to run it or we have nothing to do with it. I get that it's going to be sold, but to put the condition that, and to put a simple example, if the Ottawa Senators can be sold for $800 million and they're going to be told that they have to stay in Ottawa for 10 years, I can't see why we can't say the same to whomever's going to purchase the land that we say they have to stay there or the trailer park has to stay open for three and a half years. After that, it's up to them. I get that and I understand all that. However, if we can at least try to enforce the three and a half years for the individuals that are there now, to give them an opportunity that, okay, I know that in three years I need to move my trailer, I need to go to KOA, I need to go to wherever, then so be it.
So that is a motion to amend on the table?
Yes, Counselor.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to share a couple of things. I share the same thought about the numbers that were shared by staff. I think there's a lot of historical data in there and staff who've been here for a length of time have a good sense of what's there. So I hope we're not going to start to question staff about their intentions when they're providing information to us. They're, I'm sure, proud of their positions and they provide their info based on the inputs in front of them and that they've collected over the years. So I just wanted to make that comment. I wasn't provided any other information that some other counselors might have been provided in terms of numbers and that type of stuff, but I go by what's in front of me through staff and I appreciate the work that goes into the documents that we receive. The other comment I wanted to make is, we're in this process and this motion's going to come to the floor. My question is, what happens if we don't get a buyer who meets those terms? The next step, and I don't want to forecast too far into the future, but if we don't get that, are we then going to just post it as an open sale with no conditions? Because I, I just don't want this, it hasn't been profitable for years. This isn't, there's no magic bullet, like, and if we talk about moving resources to help our situation, like the report said that we just saw, this is an example of it. So I'm just curious and just if there's any comment in what happens if we don't within a certain term?
We move to council's direction. Counselor St. Louis suggested a reference on his part. I don't remember saying term, I meant season, but if I said term, I understand. So if that instigated a term, so be it. It's probably, you know, looks better on paper. So if the, if the, so right now, what we're doing is putting out a request for proposal to have somebody operate it on our behalf. And that's for this season. Should the sale not happen during this season, for whatever reason, we could bring it back to council and ask if they want to change conditions of sale. It's council's decision to sell the property, not, not us. We provide advice and we're at council's disposal to provide it. So if there's a mover and a secondar for an amendment to add a condition to have the sale, as the clerk mentioned, then that would be, if that amendment is approved, then the new resolution would be read as amended and enacted accordingly. Any changes to that has to come back to council. We wouldn't unilaterally make a decision to remove a condition that council enforces. We'd have to come back to council and remove that condition. I trust that that answered your question.
Counselor Hart?
Through you, Madam Chair. I just, in response to the idea of adding that, I guess, condition that they run it as a trailer park, I believe that the one year will give ample amount of time for these residents to potentially find another trailer park or if it does not continue as a trailer park. But if the idea is that, some people really believe that it could make money, I don't see why this new owner would, but the way that it's showing is that it has been losing money. So I wouldn't really want to put that in a condition that the new owner would have to do so. If there's a great chance he's going to lose money, that, to my opinion, would lower the sale value quite a bit. I'm not too sure if that's a position that council should be taking, in my opinion, based on this is, it would be a one-time sale. So even if it were to stay open for three years, we'd probably be losing some sale value based on that condition.
So would you like to put that amendment on the floor once that amendment's on the floor? We get a secondary vote, discussion on that amendment?
I think that, Palay already seconded the motion, am I correct?
Could you second the one? Okay. Is that what you'd like to do, Counselor St. Louis?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion to amend the original, do you, do you have something?
Yeah, so the latter, the last part, the amendment would be, be it resolved that the property located at 74 Teal Road being the Cache Bay Trailer Park be declared surplus to the needs of the municipality and be disposed of in accordance with the municipality's bylaw, conditional upon purchaser agreeing to continue to operate as a trailer park until the end of 2026. That's the amendment.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, defeated.
We're back to the original motion.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion on the table. Does anybody have any further questions or comments on the original motion? Okay, call it to a vote. All in favor, did you want to, well?
It would just be, be declared surplus and be disposed of in accordance with the municipality's bylaw.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Carrie, what's that?
Remember when we talked about environmental? Was that options that we were, could we choose an option?
To us as far as?
I can provide information.
Okay.
So I, I did have a discussion with an environmental consultant who indicated that there would be no real value in obtaining the environmental assessment because the environmental assessment would just tell us what we already know. It would be up to a buyer if they wanted to do something other than what is there to, to carry that out if they chose to do something different with the property. What it is can stay as it is without any further intervention or, or study. It's only when it changes that it triggers the need for that.
Okay, thanks. So when it came to committee as a whole, there were two options, so we would be going with the no environmental assessment, just solid as?
As is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have to take the vote again?
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Carrie.
It did, it did carry with. Thank you. So 9.3, approval Youth Advisory Committee, Madam Chair?
It is moved by Counsel Hard and seconded by Counsel Nickel. Whereas at a meeting held on February the 21st, 2023, council discussed the proposed Youth Advisory Committee meeting, committee terms of reference. Be it resolved that council hereby approves the terms of reference for the West Nipissing Youth Advisory Committee.
Okay, so these are just coming back out of committee a whole at the last meeting. I believe specifically for the Advisory Committee, we had discussed an age, just some slight change on the wording around age. And was that the only major change we made at all? Sorry, was that the only major change that was made in terms of reference? Was around the age?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I don't know. So through you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Gullnay is hustling very quickly.
Trying to jog my memory here. Through you, Madam Chair, I believe there was also some wording on.
Diversity, equity and inclusion.
Correct. And there was also some wording that we amended on the volunteer hours versus the stipend. I believe those were all the changes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on, on the terms of reference for this committee? I guess Counselor Tessier?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just wondering why these, this committee's not following a stipend as the other committees? And we want to take mileage. We had discussed mileage with previous committees. Was it a good way to go?
But that was the recommendation.
I think that was the discussion we had at committee of the whole, was it not?
Madam Mayor, the discussion was, well, can we give them volunteer hours instead of the stipend? And so they will get volunteer hours and recognition for the 40 hours they require for the high school. So that's the change we made. But we do, we will pay mileage for those that have to come to meetings.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, all those in favor of accepting terms of reference? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Hard and seconded by Counsel Nickel. Whereas at a meeting held in February the 21st, council discussed the proposed Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Be it resolved that council hereby approves the terms of reference for the West Nipissing Recreation Culture Advisory Committee.
Questions or comments on this? None, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Nickel and seconded by Counsel Hard. Whereas at a meeting held in March the 7th, 2023, council received a request from the Nipissing Violence Against Women Coordinating Committee, seeking support from the municipality of West Nipissing for Private Member Bill 5, Stopping Harassment and Abuse by Local Leaders Act. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality supports the request from the Nipissing Violence Against Women Coordinating Committee and direct staff to issue supporting letter to the Premier of Ontario, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, MPP, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario.
Thank you. So you'll see in your packet the, the letter and outline of the, the changes that are being brought forward in the Private Members Bill. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this piece? All those in favor?
It is moved by Counsel Hard and seconded by Counsel Nickel. To Premier Doug Ford, please be advised that the West Nipissing municipality at its meeting held in March the 7th, 2023 adopts the following resolution. Whereas the homeless crisis is taking a devastating toll on families and communities undermining healthy and prosperous Ontario. And whereas the homelessness crisis is the result of the underinvestment and poor policy choices of successive provincial governments. And whereas homelessness requires a range of housing, social service, and health solutions from government. And whereas homelessness is felt at most levels of government and the residents that they serve. And whereas municipalities and district socialist service administration boards are doing their part but do not have the resources, capacity, or tools to address this complex challenge. And whereas leadership and urgent action is needed from the provincial government on an emergency basis to develop resource and implement a comprehensive plan to prevent, reduce, and ultimately end homelessness in Ontario. Be therefore resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality calls on the provincial government to urgently acknowledge that homelessness in Ontario is a social, economic, and health crisis, commit to ending homelessness in Ontario, and work with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and a broad range of community, health, indigenous, and economic partners to develop resources and implement an action to achieve this. And further, let a copy of this motion be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Children, Community, and Social Services, the Minister of Health, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carrie? And now we'll move on to 9.7, which is the bylaw to appoint integrity.
It is moved by Counsel Palay and seconded by Counsel Gagne. Whereas bylaw number 202316. I missed a long one, sorry. 16. It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Palay. Be it resolved that bylaw, bylaw number 202316 being a bylaw to appoint Wishart Law, LLP, and J.R. Paul Cassin as Integrity Commissioner for the West Nipissing municipality for the 2022-2026 council term or until his successor is appointed, be enacted as presented. or until his successor is appointed, be enacted as presented.
Counselor Gonye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in the resolution in French, there's just an error that says we will not name. Can you just correct?
I'll fix it, thank you.
Yes, it's here too.
Follow-up question?
Okay, yes.
I I know we were going out, we were going out for pricing in regards to this. This was, this specific company was chosen in regards to the process, I guess. And I'm just curious to how many people actually responded. And I'm not, I'm not sure what the process is.
Through you, your worship. Last term, we did put it out to a request for proposal. This term, we did not. We had a request for proposal set out. I informally talked to you and asked whether, given the fact that you had a comfort level with the individual and relationship he has. And so we did assess and verify and ensure that the cost structures would be in line. Our procurement bylaw has that provision that allows for professional services to be sourced in that manner, should should you wish. So there is the opportunity of taking it out, but given, or you know, taking it out to an R F P. But given past experience and present experience with the with the council had, I think it was discussed discussed informally and I believe that this would satisfy our procurement bylaw.
Good, perfect, thank you.
Questions?
Counselor Fossey? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Because we're a bilingual community and the integrity officer will also be dealing with the public, right? And we do have a bilingual bylaw, bilingual bylaw. So would it be important that other individuals who who are bilingual can also apply or through? It's just you're excluding, it's excluding the French, a bilingual person to offer services in French to the community.
Are you, I I'm sorry, I'm confused. Are you speaking about whether our residents will be able to be served in French or whether?
Yes, yes, because if the integrity officer is on the English, the residents who don't speak English, if they need to access the integrity officer, may not be able to communicate.
Through you, it's a valid question. The accommodations can be made to ensure where those cases are necessary that either within its firm or that we provide the appropriate assistance for translation as well. And so the our documentation will be provided in both official languages and will ensure that either Wishart Law has that capacity where they where they have difficulty or we will provide some assistance.
Questions or comments? I'll put to a vote, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Chair.
It is moved by Counselor Pelletin and seconded by Counselor Gonye. Whereas by by law, twenty twenty three sixteen, council has appointed Wishart Partners and specifically Paul Cassin to act as Integrity Commissioner for the West Nipissing municipality for the council term twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six. And whereas the Integrity Commissioner requires that the Code of Conduct bylaw be updated to reflect the inquiry forms to be used for code of conduct and municipal conflict of interest investigations. Be it therefore resolved that by law twenty twenty three seventeen oh being a bylaw to amend by law twenty nineteen eighty be enacted.
So the the copy of the policy is in in your package. And I believe that this covers just updates to the forms to reflect the requirements of Mr. Cassin and his input on that. And once approved, they will be translated into French and the the forms will be available, the new forms will be available, both French and English on our website. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor Pelletin and seconded by Counselor Reardon. Whereas by by law, twenty twenty three sixteen, council has appointed Wishart Partners and specifically Paul Cassin to act as the I C for the West Nipissing municipality for the council term twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six. And whereas the I C requires that the Code of Conduct bylaw twenty nineteen A ninety eight be updated to reflect the inquiry forms to be used for code of conduct and municipal conflict of interest investigations. Be it resolved that by law number twenty twenty three eighteen to amend by law twenty nineteen ninety eight be approved as presented.
And then same thing just on the boards of committee side. So same thing just on the boards of committee side, any questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Okay, I'll just give a very quick report. Tomorrow is International Women's Day and as a woman, I'm very proud to be here. And actually, in my report this week, we will refer heavily on the Horizons Women's Centre in town. So this weekend, there was an excellent hockey game put on by our West Nipissing Fire Service against the O P P. Held for Chair Julie Martin of the West Nipissing Fire Service. Although there were a lot of people involved in the organization, Julie was really the superstar to help helped it, help put it all together. It was a really good time. I did see Counselor Nichol and Counselor Reardon and even Mr. Barbour in the stands. I had the honor of dropping the puck. And when I spoke to Julie today, she confirmed that over four thousand dollars was raised, which was split between the Horizons Women's Centre and Camp Buckle, which is a specialized camp supported by many of the fire fire services across Ontario specifically for children who are victims of burns. So that was a great time. And then also with Horizons Women's Centre, they are hosting the Women's Day Luncheon, which had been on hiatus, of course, for a couple of years and and back for the first time in two years. I know that I'll be attending, I'm expecting, I'll see both Counselor Tessier and Counselor Nichol there. I've even given Alisa, sorry, Ms. Craddock and Mr. Sharm a little poke that they might be expected to be seen out at lunch tomorrow as we celebrate the great women who work for our municipality. And with that, I'll I'll leave it, leave it for today. And Madam Chair.
It is moved by Counselor Gonye and seconded by Counselor Pelletin. Be it resolved that by law number twenty twenty three nineteen being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on March the seventh, twenty twenty three, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its cast.
All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor Pelletin and seconded by Counselor Reardon. Be it resolved that the meeting of council held on March the seventh, twenty twenty three be adjourned.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, a great meeting, guys, thank you.